I would now like to convene the special board meeting of September 27, 2022. For the record, I am going to call roll of the board members. Mr. Burnett, our student trustee, are you present? Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith? Thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
Present.
Dr. Norini? Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor? Thank you. Ms. Nguyen? Thank you. With my presence, all seven board members and our student trustee are present for our special meeting. Bear with me on this, please. We have one item on the agenda tonight for this special meeting. It is for approval of Dr. Stephen Gonzalez as chancellor of Maricopa Community College District. Is there a motion to that effect, Dr. Thor?
I move that the governing board approve Dr. Stephen R. Gonzalez as chancellor of the Maricopa Community College District. Approve a three-year employment agreement for Dr. Gonzalez as the chancellor, which terms shall begin retroactively from the date of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025, and authorize the board president to execute the employment agreement.
It's been moved and seconded on the open motion. Is there discussion on the motion? I need to pass this if there is. Being no discussion from board members, I'm going to conduct a roll call vote at this time. I will start with you, Dr. Thor. Please vote by saying yes or no. Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith? Thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
Thank you, President. I cannot hear the other people responding. I can only hear you. I heard Dr. Thor make the motion, but I have not heard the other two people in front of me. Can we get this situation corrected, please?
I will repeat the vote for you. What we have is a motion and a second. Dr. Thor made the motion.
I was able to hear that.
Dr. Norini seconded the motion. I called for discussion. There was no discussion. We have a yes vote from Dr. Thor, a yes vote from Ms. Bittersmith. It's now your turn, Mrs. McGrath.
Thank you. I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
I think that the college is in the midst of turmoil. We have falling enrollment. We have increasing costs, and nothing seems to be done about it. And I'm very disappointed in the administration that they have not addressed this. They've not done anything to reduce costs, as far as I can see. For that reason, I'm voting no.
Mrs. McGrath voted no. Moving to Ms. Smith.
I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Norini? Oh, excuse me. Mrs. Smith voted yes. Dr. Norini?
Yes.
Dr. Norini voted yes. Ms. Nguyen?
I'd like to explain my vote. I believe that Dr. Gonzalez has done a great job, and I've told him this personally, that he's improved. This is not a personal condemnation of Dr. Gonzalez. For me, this is about a process. When we select the college presidents, we vet them. This is the largest job that we have in this college system. And we told the voters and we told the taxpayers, we would conduct a search. We have not done that. That is not on Dr. Gonzalez, but he took over this role with the endorsement of 10 college presidents, many of whom are no longer serving. I think the taxpayers haven't had an opportunity to ask him questions, to see what his vision is for the next three years, and for that reason, I will vote no.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen voted no. Mr. Burnett? Mr.?
I vote yes.
Thank you. And to my vote, which is a yes, by a vote of five, two board members have voted yes, with our student trustee joining the majority. And with that, the motion carries. And Dr. Gonzalez, you are now our chancellor under a three-year agreement and all of the good things that come with that. So let's give Dr. Gonzalez a congratulations. Yes.
I have lost all sound from your side. And also, I was under the impression that the student representative did not have a vote. When did that change?
When we built the student trustee agreement. It's an advisory vote, which is why I did not count it in the full board count.
Thank you. I would appreciate it, since it's an advisory vote, that we not ask for that vote, but that's your decision. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we have another meeting. And it's in five minutes. So I assume that there are a lot of people that would like to take advantage of the next few minutes, Dr. Gonzalez. So with that, I am going to conclude the current meeting and convene us echoes and all in about six minutes. At 6:30. That's six minutes. So with that, this meeting stands adjourned. If you're live captioning our meetings, please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting, where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a web. I have some recognitions I wanted to do this evening. I'll go back to recognitions, and in the meantime, I'm going to call this meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Government Board for September 27, 2022 to order. For the record, I would call roll call of board members. I will start with our student trustee, Mr. Lynn Burnett. Are you present? Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith? Need you to speak into your microphone, please.
Your microphone.
Oh, this one does this. One more time, Mrs. McGrath.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norini?
Present.
Ms. Smith? I believe she's not with us for this meeting. Dr. Thor? We now move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Gonzalez, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Be happy to. We're going to have the stadium effect here. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. There aren't any substitutions for tonight, and we do not have a faculty executive council report. The adjunct faculty association report was submitted in writing, and we do, I understand, have a presentation from our staff group, Ms. Mangé and Mr. DeVal. Good luck with the echo. Want this one?
President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests. My name is Kelvin DeVal. I am the co-president of staff representation, and I'm here to present to you the report out from staff representation. Are we going to have slides, Elsa? So slide two, staff representation participation. Over the past month, we've been participating in a lot of different initiatives, the bachelor's degree envisioning session, CEC retreat, the forge, and others. Next slide. Next slide. We currently have five draft policy proposals going forward, public comment. This includes briefment, illness, and imminent death leave, sick leave, grievance, and progressive discipline. These will have public comment until September 30 before they are delivered to the governing board for review. Next slide. Staff representation is also participating in a lot of different councils and committees and task forces throughout the district. You can read them on the slide without echo. Next slide. This month, we wanted to highlight our district staff reps. Matthew Flores, Donna Winston, Jordan Woodoff. Next slide. Cassandra Mitchell, Casey Taka, and Wendy Tobin. Next slide. The upcoming DEIE efforts save the date. We have DAC awards coming in March, the 31st of next year, on 2023, and the upcoming Culture, Humanity, and Equity Hours online, which are 12:15 to 1:15. We have newer diversity, October 13th. October 19th, November 19th, we have the bachelor degrees community colleges, and we have an open date for the 12th. Next slide. We want to thank the board and Chancellor Gonzalez for everything you do in supporting us. Next slide. Here is some information for those who want more information on staff representation. Is there anything else?
We now have Maricopa's student senate, and Dr. Keisha Brock will be presenting with her students. Thank you.
Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC, and guests. My name is Keisha Brock, Associate Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs. And it is my pleasure this evening to introduce our Maricopa student senators for 2223 academic year. I had a few remarks I was going to make, but I think, in light of the echo, I am going to just, without further ado, introduce eight of the -- well, I'm going to introduce all 10, but eight of them are actually here in person this evening, which is super exciting. I've had the chance to meet them all, and they're very, very excited to represent students and their colleges. So student senators, when I call your name, please stand and be recognized. I'm going to start with the chair, Connor Hiran from South Mountain Community College. The deputy chair is Matthew Yantos from Chandler Gilbert Community College. The secretary, Akari Hashimoto from Scottsdale Community College. Joe Kahida, unable to be here this evening, from Gateway Community College. Kajana Hart from Estrella Mountain Community College. Ayana Churcher, Rio Salado Community College. Dania Collin from Glendale Community College. Heather Robinson, Paradise Valley. Amilda Hartley, Phoenix College. And from Mesa Community College, unable to be here as well, Xavier Garcia. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Brock, and students, we're real excited for the leadership that you provide. And I know all of us, again, want to give you a round of applause for the great work that you're doing representing the students. And Mr. Burnett, do you have any comment through echo that you'd like to add to that?
I think it's a great responsibility and honor. All of you student senators are the ones who made me come here, so I want to thank you for that opportunity. But in future, continue to do things to step up and, like you're doing now, being an example to other students who may not have the courage, but will follow in your footsteps when they say you take a step forward. So congratulations to every one of you.
Speaking of students, I believe we have a report from the Scottsdale Community College students.
President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. My name is Garrick Duarte, and I serve as the Chair of the Council of Student Leaders under the Office of Student Experience and Leadership at Scottsdale Community College. I'm here along with my fellow Council of Student Leaders to share a bit about what we were up to this past year, as well as what we have planned for this year. This is my second year as a member of the Council of Student Leaders, also known in short as CSL. As the chair, I am responsible for overseeing CSL's Civic Engagement Committee. It is my goal to help educate our student body on the importance of being civically responsible citizens. For example, last year, as we began transitioning back to hosting in-person events, CSL helped to sponsor both in-person and virtual events. We collaborated with SEC's Service Learning and Leadership and promoted voter engagement, participation, and advocacy by sponsoring a table at their Social Cause Connection. We educated our peers on how to communicate effectively with our legislative representatives on issues that are important to us by sharing the correct way to write a letter to advocate for a cause in order to influence decision-makers. Two weeks ago, CSL helped promote the week-long events that SEC and the district office helped coordinate in recognition of Constitution Day. From learning about how Maricopa interacts with our local government to a presentation by Maricopa County Recorder Richard, we had the opportunity to better understand how the Constitution affects us all. Finally, we collaborated last week with the Citizens Clean Election Commissions to help our fellow students and SEC employees register to vote on National Voter Registration Day. Can you go to the next slide? It'll be one more. While CSL promotes engagement in local issues through the Civic Engagement Committee, we also focus on the international perspective through the efforts of the Global Awareness Committee. It is important to create an environment that helps students appreciate global perspectives in order to navigate this globalized world successfully. Our Global Awareness Committee, overseen by our vice chair, Frank Hernandez, is responsible for the process of helping to plan our traditional International Education Week that will take place the third week of November, as well as collaborating on other SEC events that celebrate the inclusivity of our SEC campus. We hope you will join us for trivia night and try your luck on Global IQ. Next slide. Last year, CSL was excited to resume involvement in our community by participating at several volunteering events in person as part of our mission of our community service. In the fall, we helped out at the expo for the Phoenix Hot Chocolate Run, and in the spring, we joined our service learning friends and packed 90 food boxes to help feed 53 kids for an entire year at Feed My Starving Children. What a great feeling. And I would say our greatest accomplishment last year was entering our first-ever trailer in the city of Scottsdale's Parada del Sol Parade. Not only did Arti and CSL walk in the parade, but our very own DJ program pumped up the crowd, and interim college president, Hippolito, joined us. There's nothing like hearing "Arti" being chanted throughout the parade route. Next slide. Speaking of Arti, I am proud to announce that CSL is in the process of organizing our sixth annual Artichoke Pride Week, taking place from October 24th through the 28th. And yes, it will be in person. Its planning will be overseen by our special events manager, Patrick Landry. This week will hold various events that promote our artichoke spirit, like the Arti Mile Walk, a third volume of Arti's cookbook, and a friendly trivia game challenging everyone on who knows our fighting artichokes and SEC the best. Oh, and it's Arti's 50th birthday, so we have plans in the works to celebrate with him. Be sure to watch for our events and join us where you can. Next slide. Scottsdale Community College is home to many different clubs, ranging from the SCC Fitness and Nutrition Club to the SCC Sonoran Desert Club to the Indigenous Student Association at SCC. These amazing clubs have allowed students to be engaged in events that cater to their specific field of study or personal passion, providing them opportunities to be exposed to an environment that will help them grow professionally. At our end-of-year annual club recognition ceremony, we recognize clubs and individuals with awards such as Club of the Year, Club President of the Year, Advisor of the Year, and Most Innovative Program. We couldn't be prouder of the activities that our clubs offer to our student body to enrich their educational experience and are still creating amazing virtual and in-person events to keep members active and engaged. Next slide. I cannot go on with this report without introducing you to my fellow student leaders. We may be small this year, but we are mighty. While I am the only returning leader due to the others graduating, I welcomed three new members. We are diverse in many ways and already value each other's perspectives and amazing ideas. They have joined me this evening to represent SCC and CSL. I could not be more excited to be part of this amazing and inspiring group. I would also be remiss if I did not mention we faced the challenge of losing our CSL advisor, Jen Sidow, this year to her opportunity to advance professionally. She has been the CSL advisor for the past 10 years and will be greatly missed, but I feel she has equipped me for this leadership challenge, and I am confident that our team of CSLers and I will successfully accomplish our goal of continuing to engage our fellow student body. And next slide. Thank you. Lastly, we would like to publicly welcome our new president, Dr. Lyschinsky. We are excited to work with you and have heard nothing but positive remarks about your leadership and dedication to students and excellence. Thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to share with you a little bit about SCC's Council of Student Leaders, what we have been up to, and our plans for this upcoming
Thank you. We appreciate you doing the report under these circumstances, but I know with the packet, we were able to keep up and follow along, and want to congratulate you on the work you do. Also, we don't often have a four-legged guest with us, who looks or which looks just like my dog, so very nice. Thank you for joining us this evening. And Dr. Lyschinsky, you should be very proud of your students. Thank you. We have now emeritus awards, and so we're down to the chancellor report. So, Dr. Gonzalez, I will try this.
Yes, we are currently experiencing technical difficulties. We are -- our board chair is attempting to determine next steps to ensure fair participation in our board meeting, especially those who are online. Standby is over. We've made a decision to continue despite the technical challenges we're experiencing, and our apologies. President Sullivan, members of the Board, members of CEC and guests that are with us. I'm going to keep this brief in light of the issue that we're having. First order of business as a chancellor will be to fix the mics in this conference room. I've received many text messages and sitting here, some have said I've been hired twice tonight. I want to thank the Board for its support and confidence in me. I'm truly honored to serve as Maricopa's next chancellor. I want to also thank the many faculty, staff, and my administrative team for their support and guidance during the past two years, nine months, six days, and one hour while serving as interim chancellor. We have faced and overcome many challenges along with unprecedented level of success during that time. I look forward to working with all of you, in addition to those yet to be hired in key leadership roles, on taking Maricopa to the next level. You can count on my continued leadership that includes attention to strengthening a culture of care for our number one resource, our employees, a commitment to student-centered decisions, and a constant strive towards excellence as the best-in-class community college system in the country fueled by innovation, shared governance, and good old-fashioned hard work. More to come on that. I am also pleased to report that in Week Five of this fall semester, we are up in headcount by 0.1%. And happy birthday to Dr. Tiffany Hunter. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. We now move to Citizens Interim. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the governing board. In compliance with the open meeting law, the governing board will neither discuss nor take action on issues raised during this portion of the agenda. When necessary, issues will be taken under advisement and placed on subsequent agendas. Presenting concerns to the Board and the free expression of ideas should be communicated with decorum and respect. We all know uncivil or disorderly conduct is not permitted. The use of derisive or insulting language is not accepted. Where we stand right now is that as someone's name is called, they have three minutes to address the governing board, again recognizing that we cannot respond. I have several cards in front of me this evening. I will take them in the order that I've received them. And with that, the first one is Ms. Staff Representative. Mr. DeVal, you have three minutes. And your own mic.
I don't have to share this time? President Sullivan, members of the Board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests. My name is Kelvin DeVal and I'm here representing Staff Representation. I would like to say, Dr. Gonzalez, Chancellor, Staff Representation is excited to congratulate you very much on this well-deserved role. You have Maricopa Community Colleges. You've seen them through extreme difficult and unknown times and we look forward to standing side by side with you to support you in your leadership as we grow to be the best we can be for our students and our community. Not only have you supported staff, you have given staff a voice, a place at the table where our perspective matters and our feedback is important. For the first time in a long time, staff feel valued and supported. We look forward to supporting you and following your leadership in the mission and moving Maricopa forward. On behalf of Staff Representation, congratulations. Thank you, sir.
My next card is from Mr. Paul Frankowick. I know I mispronounced it, sorry, Paul. And you have your own mic up there, too.
So, thank you. My name is Paul Frankowick. I'm speaking on behalf of the Adjunct Faculty Association. I just wanted to say, on behalf of us, congratulations on solidifying that gig with the district. We're all hoping for that, so thank you for that. And that's about it. I just don't know how everyone, they're going to tell jokes or be real serious or whatever, so. Thank you, just congratulations.
Our next speaker is Ms. Camille Newton, representing faculty.
I'm going to keep it shorter. President Sullivan, members of the Board, CEC, colleagues and guests, the faculty of MCCCD extend their congratulations and support of Dr. Stephen Gonzalez's appointment as Chancellor of the Maricopa Community Colleges. We value and share Dr. Gonzalez's commitment to shared governance, academic freedom, and excellence in higher communication, or higher education. Twice. We look forward to learning more about the 2022-2023 goals and we will continue to work in partnership with Dr. Gonzalez to serve students and the communities of Maricopa. Congratulations, Chancellor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. I have another card. Dr. Eric Lyschinsky. I believe you're speaking on behalf of the Chancellor's Executive Council.
President Sullivan, members of the Board, Chancellor Gonzalez, colleagues and guests. My name is Eric Lyschinsky and I am here representing our administrators across our system to also congratulate and applaud the Board on their decision tonight and congratulate our Chancellor, Stephen Gonzalez. I had the privilege of working alongside Dr. Gonzalez for the last 18 months. Here's what I've learned in that timeframe. He is a leader with integrity, a leader who listens, a leader who is willing to make a difficult decision, and a leader who keeps our students and employees at heart. Also in this time, I've gotten to know him just a little bit when we had those downtime's on the sixth floor between meetings. Got to know him as a person, too. He's a man with heart. He's a man who puts family first. And when he and I would talk about the role of being a dad, the most important job that we do, it was in those moments that I knew our district was in good hands. So again, on behalf of the administrators across our system, it's a heartfelt congratulations on this appointment, Dr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Lyschinsky. I have a card from Mr. Eli Dalton Webb. Please join the podium. We'll pass you, oh no, you have your own mic. Thank you for joining us this evening.
I wanted to ask if the Board would be willing to consider to He's messing with me.
It would have been easier if you put it down and go on repeat if I can.
I don't like the microphone. Yeah, maybe that one Heather went over. Can you help him with that? We're thinking that maybe that microphone might... And we apologize. Oh, clearly you can't do that. There are way...
I'm trying to get...
Does that work for everyone? Okay.
I wanted to ask the College Board if they consider making available some of the, some or all of the candidates. People can sit down, study. Because there's people in this county that work night shift. Like, for example, let's say someone who works 6:00 PM, 6:00 AM. They get up at 3:00 PM and if the college library closes at like 4:00 PM, it's like an hour after we wake up. I know most of the colleges, they have security, police, which guard the campuses 24 hours a day. So I wanted to ask if there's college, look at any routes that are nearby the security. There's this college, Coach East College. They have like a student union and they never close the student... Kind of cool that you can go in there. There wasn't really computers, it wasn't the library, but it was someplace you could go to at odd hours or even to get away from the house, study. I know you might don't want to name like very huge at like 4:00, 5:00 or 6:00 at night, but have security through my room somewhere nearby by campus police. Small room that doesn't need guarded, like a whole lot of service area.
Mr. Webb, we can't respond to anything like that. We can suggest that something about the what that can follow up on. We have your contact. Would that be fair? I can't respond due to the nature of how this presentation works, but we can certainly take that into consideration. Which college do you want? But you're asking for consideration for all colleges in the process. Thank you. Thank you very much.
For the record, Mr. Webb's presentation was about after-hours services, traditional hour services. And though we can't respond during Citizens Interim, it has been recommended that Dr. Gonzalez also heard the presentation and will move on from there. We also have another card from Ms. Pleasant.
Can you hear me? Great. Once again, my name is LaWan Pleasant. Congratulations, Dr. Stevens. I mean, Dr. Gonzalez, can you hear me out? How's that? This is terrible.
We need you for the record.
To speak into the microphone.
And once again, Madam President, good evening. Good evening. Governing Board members, faculty and staff in front. Once again, my name is LaWan Pleasant. This is about my fourth time approaching the governing board in reference to my continued concerns regarding what happened to me. I was employed with the District Office in February 2019. I was abruptly terminated on the 19th after filing my complaint. You all have got the information. You have hired two different attorneys to dispute what I have said. Most recently, you consulted Jones, Skelton, and Hotchulie and retained, under the guidance of Gordon Lewis, the attempt to dispute the information provided by Stacy Gabriel, who was the original attorney that you all hired to dispute my truth. Do you know what retaliation is? If you don't, let me tell you. Retaliation occurs when an employer, through a manager, supervisor, administrator, fires an employee or takes any other type of adverse action against an employee for engaging in protected activity. This attorney has said, "The interaction that motivated Ms. Pleasant to file her February 7, 2019 discrimination complaint also resulted in a termination recommendation from Ms. Pleasant from Ms. Mervinway." Point, you can't have, I can't file my complaint against my supervisor and then they in turn. Dr. Gonzalez, we had had this conversation. You were supposed to have someone looking at this investigation. This is what the investigation has proven. I don't give you my vote of confidence. I don't. And I agree with you, Ms. Plath. You always see the letter that I received that provided to you.
Ms. Pleasant, you're welcome to come and talk to us under Citizen anytime. I'm being noted that your time is up. Thank you. Sure. And hopefully, next time, if you come back, we'll be able to hear you in a more productive way.
Hopefully you'll contact me so I won't have to set all this up.
You're welcome. So concluding Citizens Interim, I'm going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is consideration of the consent agenda. So before I move to a motion, is there any Board member or the chancellor who wished to remove any item from the consent agenda? Dr. Norene?
Yes, I'd like to remove Item 26, the approval of proposed course fee changes for spring semester fiscal year 2022-2023.
Okay, Item 26 on the consent agenda will be moved to non-consent action items for motion and discussion. With that, then, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented without Item 26? Thank you, Mrs. Nguyen. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Thor. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please vote by saying aye. Aye. And that would include you, Mr. Burnett? Thank you. Any opposed? Please vote by saying no. Hearing none, the motion carries on a vote of 6 to 0 with our student advisor also voting in support. With that, then, we know Item F22 and F23 require Board signatures. So Mrs. Macias has the forms. If you can stay, board members, to sign that document after the meeting, that would be helpful. Thank you. Moving to our non-consent action items, the first item for consideration is item 26 from the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to move that forward?
I move to approve the course fees as are presented with the exception of AIT 720 and 721 at Estrella Mountains, Robotics 1 and Robotics 2, EXS 146, EXS, EXS 246 at Glendale, EXX 146, 246, 255, and 257 at Mesa Community College, and VET 104, 109, and 230 at Mesa. And then I'd like to remove INT 122 from PC.
I can't keep up with all those numbers, but is there a second on the motion? Thank you, Dr. Thor. We have a motion and a second on the description presented by Dr. Norini. Open for discussion. Dr. Norini?
Thank you. I had sent a list of questions about these fees about a week or so ago. We got them back today about about 4:00 o'clock, so I haven't had a chance to review the answers. But if I can, I'll go through some of these. One of the things I wanted to point out is that the change in fees for just this semester is $209,038. To get that, put that into perspective a little bit, our students working minimum wage will have to work 16,331 hours to pay for those. Okay, so I just want to keep that in mind. So with the first couple, I've handed out some of these forms to the board members so we can kind of go through this. It's my understanding that fees cannot be used to buy or maintain equipment that costs more than $5,000. And with the robotics equipment, I believe that's going to cost more than $5,000. With the exercise science class, classes, those two are also costing more than $5,000. And besides, I think Perkins just gave them those colleges $5,000, that college at, was it Glendale? $5,000 in the Perkins Grant to pay for equipment and supplies. At Mesa, the same exercise science classes as well are over $5,000. So whether they were purchasing that equipment or maintaining that equipment, I believe we can use our student fees for that. With the VET classes at Mesa, again, we just granted them $2,353 through the Perkins Grant. So I'm sure we can find $600 in that grant someplace to pay for these fees. And then I understand that PC has withdrawn all their fees for that. So with that, that's why I want to pull those so that we can look at those answers, make sure that those fees are accurate, that we can use those fees to pay for the things that they're set out for.
Any further discussion from board members on the motion? Ms. Bittersmith?
Oh, you need the mic? Dr. Norini, just, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention and pulling this because I have not had a chance to look at the response that came in at 4:00. So board members, I have a quick question for Dr. Gonzalez. I'm making the presumption that if we pull these for further conversation for approval or disapproval at the next board meeting, that is not going to create conundrums for printing and registration information for the next semester, correct?
Dr. Gonzalez has just referred the Ms. Bittersmith's question to Ms. Sullivan.
So President Sullivan, Dr. Norini, Ms. Bittersmith, any course fees that we defer this month that are effective for June, I'm sorry, January, will not make it into class schedules that open on October 30th. So we'll be adding course fees after the fact, which we usually do not do based on the impact on students. They can be proposed for the next term, but for spring, they would not be able to be affected.
So just be sure the rest of the fees will be, we can vote on it, and we will be approved. It'll be just for these classes here that we won't be moving forward for the fees that they've requested or the increase in fees.
Ms. Bittersmith, and then Dr. Thor.
Again, so let me ask the question in a different way, presuming that that Dr. Norini's motion prevails. Can you give me an assessment of what would happen then in terms of a student participation and the ability to fulfill what we need to have to provide those courses in adequate fashion?
So I believe the courses would move forward, the new fees would not be assessed. So there wouldn't be any impact for the immediate term.
Let me, I'm apologize, Madam President. Let me just add one more. I'm trying to understand, obviously, the new fees were proposed for a reason. So does that impact the ability to provide adequate instruction if we don't have additional fees to cover supplies or what's anticipated to cover supplies?
I'm sorry. Thank you for the clarification. I think it would in some cases, especially in the case of consumables. So those are used in the learning environment, and in the cases of equipment, it would be used for the upkeep and maintenance.
Dr. Thor?
This mic? I just have to turn it on. I'm really torn on this particular topic because I appreciate very much the attention that Dr. Norini gives to the fees. And I'm also hopeful that the colleges, knowing the level of interest that he has, will be very carefully scrutinizing fees that are presented to the board. That said, I think it's entirely unrealistic to have given the board the answers to his questions at 4:00 this afternoon. So given that, the colleges may have to find the money to cover these for the spring semester. But I'm inclined to support Dr. Norini's position on this.
Mr. Burnett, I believe, has commented.
Just so I'm clear, we're talking about students paying for a deficit in the budget? Then we're not. So the students, the students are going to pay. And if they don't, then the money will have to come from somewhere. We're not talking about the entire curriculum. We're talking about a handful of courses. No one here likes to be surprised by a bill that you weren't expecting, and I think a 20-year-old student probably feels the same way. It probably impacts them more than it does us, depending on the dollar amount. But I would, I would say, thank you, one, thank you for doing the research, and secondly, you have to, the schools have to give us the opportunity to look at the information before we can make a decision on how we need to handle this.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
We're talking about compromise. One of the things that, what I'm trying to get to with my pestering with fees, I hear eyes roll when I bring up fees, is our students deserve a transparent understanding of the cost of their education. Right? They need to understand what these fees are paying for exactly. They don't, when they sign up for a class, it just says, you got this fee. It doesn't say what it's paying for. And a lot of times, these fees aren't calculated into the financial aid package. So the total cost for the education is generally higher than what we are using to calculate our financial aid budgets. So I would propose that going forward, we have a much more transparent way of doing this. The other thing is that our students don't have a way of challenging these fees. They can't request a refund, that we don't have a policy to request a refund. So when a fee is paying for a hard hat or gloves that they may already have, they can't request a refund for those fees that they've already paid for. And if I read, and I did a lot of deep dive into the financial aid policies, if we don't have that kind of refund opportunity for the students, we can't use these fees from financial aid to pay for them. So we need to take a deep dive into the way the fees are presented, what they're representing, how the students can request refunds, and how their cost of education is being as accurate as we can possibly make it so they understand, and they're not surprised with additional fees. Because we go around and we boast a lot about $85 a credit hour. But we know that's not the real cost of our education. We know that's not the real cost. And I want to commend the colleges and the programs out there who've added fees, but taken away the books, right? And that's reduced the cost of our education, and I commend those colleges and those departments. I really appreciate what they've done with that. And that's going to give the students a better understanding of what exactly they're going to pay for. That's going to prepare the students day one to be ready for the class, so.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table to accept the course fees with the exceptions noted by Dr. Norini, and they are of record. With that, I'm going to call, vote, all those in support of the motion, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? There being no opposition, the motion will carry. We understand that there will be some classes which are going to be accepted as a result of this motion regarding course fees, and there will be other ways of attending to those costs. And I would like to add to Dr. Thor's comment that Dr. Norini does take a deep interest in these issues and often takes the lead on these for us as a board. And we do appreciate that. And Dr. Gonzalez, you will ensure that we can move forward with some of Dr. Norini's comments in mind and the board's support. So for the record, Dr. Gonzalez has indicated he wants the list again, so I think we're good. So we're going to move on to the next agenda item, and that is approval of the three memorandums of understanding for the 2223 faculty agreement. Is there a motion to approve the three memorandums of understanding for the 2223 faculty agreement? Dr. Norini has made the motion. Is there a second? Dr. Thor's seconded. Is there a discussion from board members? I'm seeing and hearing no need for discussion, so I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the three memorandums of understanding presented, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Being none, the motion carries 6-0 with the student trustee voting on. Moving along the agenda, we have a first read on employment and separations for July 9, 22 through August 19, 22. Are there any comments or questions from the board members? Being none, we move to the budget analysis report fund one, general unrestricted fund for the two months ending 8/31/2022. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Being none, we all move on to board reports. Let's start with Ms. Bittersmith.
Given the audio challenges, Madam President, I will defer my report to the next meeting, if that's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith. Mrs. McGrath, are you still on? I'll move on if she joins us. Dr. Norini?
I'll shorten mine here. Let's see. On September 7th, I was at PC's grand opening for the Bumstead Resource Center, sponsored by Whataburger, so everybody go get a burger and support them. Let's see. On September 12th, I attended a presentation virtually began by PC, by Dr. Cruzy and Mark Schur about the demographics, which was very enlightening. And hopefully, we can get some of that same information across the district about what our student success rate and enrollment and that sort of thing. And along those same lines, I get a weekly update of PC's enrollment, and I'm happy to say they were green in all the areas. So they were up from last year in all their areas enrollment. Let's see, went to the Phoenix Forge Grand Opening, sponsored by the foundation. Thank you, foundation. But the most exciting thing I did was last night when I went to see South Mountain's volleyball team win over Park College, Park University, in a five-game tiebreaker. So they did a great job, so congratulations.
Ms. Smith is not with us. Dr. Thor? I, excuse me. Mrs. McGrath, yes. Do you have a board report?
No, I don't have a board report, but I wanted to vote no on the last item, the three different things about the employee agreement. I think that there's something seriously wrong with our administration, that we have to have an employment agreement that's 122 pages long. I don't understand what we've done to our employees, that they feel the need for this, so I vote no on it.
For the record, we will work with the attorney to record your vote as a no, which will change the total 5-1. With the student trustee voting yes. Thank you, Mrs. McGrath. Any other comments from you?
No, thank you. It's too difficult to try to communicate tonight. I'm with Ms. Bittersmith. I'll defer to the next month.
Thank you, and I can appreciate that, actually. Dr. Thor, back to you.
I associate myself with Ms. Bittersmith. We're all getting a headache, I think, by now.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen.
Just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Labor Ruiz, whose last day is Friday. It's been my privilege to work with you, and you have contributed so much to this college system. I wish you nothing but the best of luck and success, and thank you for loving those God shows. Love you.
Mr. Burnett?
I'll defer also due because of the technical difficulties.
Thank you. My list is long. I won't say, I'll fall into the other camp. I do want to say there were several announcements for this evening, which I did not read in the beginning, the recognition because of this system challenge. But certainly, one of them was also to acknowledge Ms. Labor Ruiz's transition, and I know we all wish you well. And Ms. Smith, good luck with that Athena Award. You're welcome. And let's see, I think I had another one. You're a finalist. Been down that road. And Amy Diaz, you've also been selected as one of 31 leaders in the 2223 class of Aspen Rising Presidents, so congratulations to you there. And we have Mr. Brian Spicker, who's our president and CEO of our foundation. And we have Mr. Brian Spicker, who's our president/CEO of our foundation, who's been named transformational leader of the year 22 for business transformation advisory. There's a lot more words on this paper to read about all of you, and again, Ms. Labor Ruiz, thank you for your service toward district this many years. And, but because of this repetitive, ongoing echo, I'm going to say goodnight. I'm going to conclude the meeting, going to once again offer congratulations, Dr. Gonzalez. Thank you, board, for all your dedication and work that has gone into a lot of processes over the last few months. Our work is important, we do it in concert with the chancellor and all of you. So go forth and work even harder, Dr. Gonzalez, with your team. So everyone, goodnight, and thank you for your patience this evening, we appreciate it.